All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Ryenbeck zoning board's appeals hearing for February 15th, 2023. And first, did everybody get a chance to look at the meeting minutes for the last meeting in January?
Yes.
I just had a small, a slight edit which I couldn't...
Right. Okay. Any questions, concerns, corrections? No? Okay. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, it's passed. Okay, the first thing that is on tonight is the case from North Side Auto Body. And what I'd like, you're here for that.
Yes.
So what I'd like you to do is just simply to come on up to the speaker and state your name and basically go through the project list. What we're doing right now is we have the application. We just want to see if it's sufficient enough for us to accept it. We may ask for additional information. In fact, I know I'll ask for a couple of things. But if you could just generally tell us what you're looking for and maybe kind of some questions, okay?
Absolutely. All right. My name is Grace Pruszkis, and I'm with the GNS Group. We have received your denial letter. Thank you. We are, this is in regards to the freestanding sign that exists on the property. Our intention was to reface that sign in its current condition. We would need from you a variance for 15 square feet as 12 square foot if permitted, a variance for total signage, both building and the freestanding signs, which we did permit and install their building signage already for them. The variance because we exceed the 30 square foot limit that is permitted. We would need a variance for the height of the freestanding sign, which exceeds the six foot that's permitted, and a variance for the freestanding sign being closer to the front property line than the 20-foot minimum required. It is our intention to reuse the existing sign rather than have our customer have to pay for an additional sign taking this one down. And of course, it is at six foot, they would also have to redo their landscaping.
That's already the sign, correct? The North Side sign is already in place?
The building sign is already in place because we did receive the permit. This is a temporary sign currently.
Okay, and it's for that freestanding sign which you're also looking for on the building as well, or?
No, that has already been permitted and installed.
They just need, the building is incorporated in terms of the total signage for the current square foot limit. So it is installed, but that is, that alone is fine, but it's with the combined freestanding.
And it's not going to be any bigger than, obviously, the sign that we said before because you're utilizing the same...
Correct.
Same stuff. Instead of Rycard, it's going to say North Side?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll take this? I think Kim had some issues, not issue, but she concerns about exact measurements, which were very, very sneaky about we like to have exact measurements. So Kim, maybe you can address some of those concerns?
Yeah, so part of the reason that I need the, we need the exact measurements is that one of those standards that's being asked for when the ZBA is considering granting or not varies, is very substantial how it fits in with the community. And so you have here, this sign here says like the existing condition is 40 inches 64. Do you know, is that, then on this other sign, which I think was provided, the dimensions are listed as 37.5, 61. Do you know what the...
The difference there would be what we refer to as the retainer. So the larger dimension is the actual outside to outside of the cabin, and the smaller dimension would be just the graphic that is the visible area of the sign.
And are you, you're adding lights to this as well? Does that remove feature to the...
There would be, instead of, I believe right now there are just large spotlights down onto it, and we had intended for a light bar that is less substantial looking. It's a nice limelight light bar across the top. This feature right there.
And where are the lights down?
I believe there are lights... Oh, good grief, thank you for the question. Or something, button, I see, there you go. I believe there are lights...
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I believe the lights are here. And our plan is to create this light bar.
And that, that light is on both sides? There's one on each, on each side?
That would be correct, yes. It is a double-sided sign.
They go horizontally to the sign, but your new light will go the other way and just to those spots?
No, this is our proposed light bar. That would, this is the side view of the sign.
Yeah, right.
So, right, yeah, so that would be this here. And so that would light evenly the face all the way across. We just, you know, the light fills right down in that way. So that it really just lights the face of the sign.
Are those going to be lit all 24 hours or are they going to be off when the business is off?
It should be off when the business is off.
Do you have any, a lot of times when we have sign situations in elimination, how we like to get renderings showing what the lighting will look like?
I can absolutely provide that. Because I am the graphic designer, so I know I can do that.
Okay, well, all right, well, that's it. So what we like to do is to get, just to see the level of lighting, how it's going to shine on and all that kind of stuff. So if you could do that, that'd be wonderful. The other thing is, I saw that...
Are you going to leave the elevations?
No, you can go, ladies first.
So just while we were talking about just the proper measurements, so this, which was submitted to, I think you submitted your signing permit. So see how like you have here, like you really have, like the measurements really drawn out here, like 19 square feet. Would you, I think that what would be most helpful for the board is if you could provide similar renderings for the front sign.
Absolutely.
Because, yeah, because the front side, like you have like here, like it's handwritten in 13 feet. And so I think it would be helpful if you could have kind of like that similar design elevations showing all of that for the, for the freestanding sign.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then if you could also, since you do need a variance for setback, you could provide a survey to show how, you know, I know you have it, I think here at 2.8, but if you could have a survey to just kind of show exactly where it is in connection with that would also be helpful to me.
Absolutely. I will check with our customer. I assume that they have that.
And then I thought I saw that you have, you're going to be having some elimination on the, on the side of this on the building? Is that in place or is that contemplated?
Oh, it says elimination by customer.
That would be a similar light bar to the one I was describing for the freestanding sign. A light bar across the top. And yes, I believe that we are still in the need to do that.
So is that part of this application to the...
No, that would have been part of the original building sign application.
I don't think they even would need a variance for the light because their, the identity wall sign seems to be within what they, I think they can do it. I wouldn't count it as part of the identity wall.
Okay. I just see it on here, so.
How long do you have the temporary permit for?
I don't know. I can check.
I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to cause you to lose that temporary permit.
I don't know how long your permit's generally granted for, so I can...
That's not, oh, I can check.
That's a ZA question.
Yeah. Oh, it might say in the, I know there's...
Then I, you can probably review it.
Yeah, I was just going to say it's temporary.
And I don't know if there's an actual time.
Probably something to have a temporary.
Probably once, so.
Yeah, we can check that out.
Oh, good grief. Yeah, I would hope that since we are before you...
I'm sure we can talk to the ZA if you need...
I guess my question is, which are, did you guys have any questions about the application?
Just want to be clear, it's four variances on the same freestanding sign?
Three, three variances are primarily for the...
For the one freestanding sign, that's good enough.
Yes, so it's a, it's a non-performing sign. And when changes are made, all those changes cause it to have to be performing. And Ryenbeck also has a thing that if you have a non-performing sign when the zoning law was first enacted or recently enacted in 2009, it should have sunsetted. So all the non-performing signs really should have been sunsetted in five years. So, so because there's a change, that's why it has to be conforming. Kind of similar to what happened with Dells. You know, they were kind of using the same sign, but because they were making changes, those changes caused them to fill in, Grandpa did, and they had to make those changes. So three of those variances are dealt specifically with freestanding sign. That's the one that the sign can't see 12 square feet area and surface area. The height of the sign and then the distance to the property line are based solely on the freestanding sign. The maximum total square footage includes both the freestanding sign and the identity wall sign because the total signage can't exceed 30 square feet.
And as far as, when you look at the freestanding sign, which is remaining the same essentially as far as size, and the identity sign on the front of the building, are they the same in size essentially as what Rycard had there or is it...
I believe they are, yes. Definitely, the freestanding sign is...
Freestanding sign is the same.
But I believe when we did the rendering, it did...
It looks like it's actually a little smaller from this one. Here, the North Side kind of looks like it's kind of between these two...
Ah, true.
True columns here and looking for Rycard actually covered.
I think they did, or so.
Yes, actually smaller, thank you.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, it is. We made a smaller sign.
There you go. Means a smaller variance.
There you go.
Well, actually, no variance for the identity.
Well, there's no variance, but if you put the two of the, it makes it more, a smaller total.
And this is just, this was just taken from Google Maps, if you see. I just said that's the temporary sign.
That is the temporary sign.
And then that's the identity wall.
I guess, we obviously need some more information, but it seems like we have a fair amount of information. I don't know what your opinion is as far as accepting a subject to or...
Well, I would like, if we could have those renderings, you know, just to confirm what the measurements are, we're going to need those measurements for the public hearing notice. And I like to just make sure that they're, they're accurate. So I would actually recommend that we ask for those renderings to be submitted before the next meeting and then we'll take that up. But not accept that completely until we get those renderings and the survey and the light.
Yes, the survey, the night view, and we're going to verify that the measurements are on our rendering.
Yes.
Okay, so the recommendation of council, because there are multiple things that we need to have before we can schedule public hearings, that we won't accept the application tonight, but we'll accept it at the next meeting, assuming all of those items are provided to us.
Okay, so the next meeting will not be the public hearing?
No.
It will be, you're accepting, okay.
All right, and you provide all that stuff to us that we can accept it and have a public hearing at the next meeting? And that's, I think, why Kim was asking you about.
Yeah, I can look at the temporary sign that says 13.
That would be great, yeah.
We can talk to...
I just look, I just look at that.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think that, I think because we're, they're in front of it moving forward, I think that should be...
So anyway, any thoughts by either board members about not accepting this evening, accepting at the next meeting subjects to the various items being provided to us?
Yeah, I do think we need additional information.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we not accept the application this evening, but hopefully we can accept it at the next meeting, subject to the various items that we discussed, but in a second.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so we'll see you here at the next meeting with an amended, you know, with some additional information and hopefully we'll accept it at the next meeting. That's all.
Okay. And if you could just give us those revised submissions, regimen two weeks before the next meeting?
Yes. So within the next week or so is what you'd really like to happen?
Soon better. Soon better. But let's see where we're at.
Oh.
Just before it's...
Right.
Before the cutoff of the...
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the next, that's all for new business. Now we have the public hearing and that's with me. All right, good evening.
This is what's I, the first page was the survey of the previously existed. So this is the public hearing for 16 Old Hope Road. We're requesting four variances. A front yard setback variance of 94 foot seven inches, bringing this 150-foot required setback, reducing that to 55 foot five inches. Another one for the North Side yard, a variance of 78 foot one and a half inches. 100 feet is required and we're reducing that to 21 feet two and a half inches. So you can see that.
So for... Was this the...
What date is this?
10 October 2nd.
That's the old... It's after this. There we go. 21 foot two and a half inches. The South Side, 100-foot side yard setback is required. And we have the 27-foot free proposed. And again, this is what was approved in 2021, case 2012. The last one is an area variance. The allowable coverage is 1163 square feet and the proposed new residence coverage is 1135 plus 635 for the garage for a total of 770.75 square feet. So the variance is 67.75 square.
Okay, and these are all the same as what was created back in 2020, correct?
Yes.
All right. Now, we did get a, some information from the new neighbor you have about some fencing and, you know, some, some trees and some privacy stuff. That's still going to be in play?
We're showing the new tents from here, the back corner, across where that neighbor's house is. This is that house. This is the fence. And then we're showing bushes up even further up along the property line. The reason we don't want to bring the fence all the way up is it would then cross the wetlands. There's a little, you can see it on the second drawing.
Yes.
A slight crossing of the wetlands over the property line.
I think actually, because it's state wetlands, it's actually, so the state...
The just...
Yeah, so that's the actual wetlands, the wooden hatch, right? So then...
No, that's the buffer.
It says here the buffer.
The buffer.
Yeah, the buffer actually...
Oh, it comes from here.
Yeah. So see, the, so for the state wetlands, in addition to that building in the wetlands, you also can't build within 100 foot of the buffer. And here, this shows the 100-foot buffer, kind of pretty much goes all the way almost to the house a little bit. And here, it goes again to kind of a corner here.
But we're, the house is not near the buffer.
Right, the house is not.
But the fence, if we put the fence here, we're in the buffer, but we're not in the wetland. If we cross all the way to the front yard, we wouldn't be in the wetland.
So here's the, I think this green, see this little green hat?
Yes.
That, that represents the 100-foot buffer. So even going a little bit beyond that, it's still going to be within 100 foot buffer.
Right, but if we go here, so would that mean we'd need a special use permit?
You wouldn't need a special use permit, but you would need a wetlands permit from the planning board.
Would it be...
But even, even, really, this is, this spot here, this little corner is the only spot that's not...
That we can put a fence without?
Without crossing it, yeah.
Okay, so what if we put bushes in for privacy and tell the neighbor that they're requesting something that's not as of right?
Well, it's not that, it's, it's, we need an additional permit for it. It's not that it's, I don't know if I can say that's not as of right. It's, because typically a fence would be as of right. It's just the conditions, the environmental conditions is making it, you need an additional permit for it. What were you saying, correct?
It can just be added as an additional thing to the planning board submission. So it's not like you have to do a whole nother, you should be able to do that.
But are you trying to build a fence longer specifically because your neighbor wants it?
Yes, I, the last submission, a year and a half, two years ago, the neighbor, like they're requesting we put a fence, which we agreed to, and then they sold the property, and now the new neighbor sent a letter asking for a fence. So...
Right, and then what they asked for is a little bit different from the prior neighbor. The prior neighbor just wanted a fence along the side so that you could see each other's houses, and the new person is asking for a fence in the back, it looks like.
Oh, that, that...
But what I was kind of concerned about was that, I thought, and we granted the last time, we had some pretty clear markings as to where the fence was going to be.
Yes.
And I'm not sure I see that on the current application.
I'll show you how it changed. The only reason it changed was I didn't want to cross the wetlands. We were, nobody mentioned that it was crossing the wetlands until the last planning board meeting and they suddenly saw it and said, oh, no, now the fence is crossing, so that's another problem. So since it was a new neighbor, I didn't think there would be any harm in doing a shorter fence than plantings rather than a long fence.
Which is a new neighbor, so...
So, but it, can we, shall, go to the drawing before where it's, this is the same thing, but I'd rather show it.
With the, the white room?
On the full site plan.
The, the full site plan?
Yeah, the paper floor. I guess it doesn't show, oh, there it is, okay. So, oh, it used to come a little further, like probably to here and then it crossed the wetlands, so we just shortened it, put bushes crossing the wetlands.
And how high would those bushes grow?
Well, a fence can only be six feet. We would aim to have the bushes taller to give more privacy.
But I think that this is, this part, I think probably maybe estimating from here over is part of the buffer though.
Yeah, but it's a lot easier to get the buffer than specifically in the wetland. Right.
I'm not sure, actually, Charlotte is saying the same, the same concept that came. Because I think it's also that you're not, it's not like you're putting structure in the wetting, you're putting a fence.
Well, so the new neighbor would like the fence to go where?
Maybe pretty much the whole, the whole border between 16 Old Hope and 14, so the whole, the whole property line, so it would be from here...
From the front yard.
Well, not in the front yard, but here, so the red indicates where they...
So they're not going into the wetland?
They are, this is...
At the end there? They are at the end there, but what they proposed, and what was agreed upon before was basically just the side, not the back. Okay, but that was approved and that was with talking with the neighbor we were out there and it was agreed with the former here. Now, the new neighbor wants an increase in, actually in the back, where, I don't see, I always want to see it there in the back anywhere from the previous house. I fully understand the side, that makes sense to me. And I just, my only concern is a shortening of the fence. I understand that, you know, it may cause you some problems that have to be dealt with at the planning board.
Yeah, I don't, like, I don't even know really by what we would go as far as they say is a problem. So the planning board did provide a response to the referral and what they had indicated was that they had no problem with the fence, they just would need to have a wetlands permit.
And for the original side fence?
Yes.
And that's what I would prefer, that's great. What you're coming to, you're coming to... What you're coming to, you're coming back to is because you weren't able to do it within the year prior.
Right.
So, I'm going to be doing this since I did the last one. I would feel most comfortable just reading exactly what you were reading before. All right, so which would mean extending the fence as originally set forth in this drawing right here.
Okay.
After 2021.
And then, I've seen two different drawings of fences, two different styles.
The first style was very attractive, but we decided it was a little fussy and wasn't going to wear as well because it was made of two inch slats.
Is this a new one or an older?
That's the new one.
That's the new one.
This is the one from...
Yeah, is that on the screen?
This is the one from your previous ones.
Right, so these were very narrow slats. And after having more time to think about it, it's more of a delicate fence that doesn't have a holdup. So we decided to go to full boards.
Different size, was it read on two years ago, actually, was it six foot?
Well, it's always been six foot. It was the length, basically. This was the original right here. And basically, there was a section chopped off here.
Okay. Because of what?
Right. But that's not an issue, it just, you need a permit, and then...
That's all we need.
And then you can, you can get that here, this section right here.
The neighbor owns here.
The neighbor is over here, and you can...
And so there's really no reason for the neighbor to ask for that back fence.
Not in my mind. Not in my mind. Here's the neighbor's house. And so asking for fencing back here doesn't really make sense. Asking for fencing all the way along makes a lot of sense, so it can't seem...
Yeah, Richard, just to show you, this is the aerial view from people's property parcel access. So the red highlight is 16 Old, this wetlands property, Old Post Road. And then here's the neighbor at 14 Old Post Road. So their, their property. So it is kind of, it is a clear area here on the back side, that their house is on the side. And then this is all wooded in the back.
And the neighbor's also asking, seeing what the possibilities of having that fence put up before construction?
Yes, they did. They mentioned that because, I think, they mentioned that they would prefer if the fence could be constructed before the construction starts on the house for an additional buffer. I'm not sure.
Is that something that you people can require? Or is that outside the timing of planning that's there?
Yeah, I'm not, you're not...
We've never had that issue, quite frankly. I think it probably is outside of our bandwidth, because whether we, you know, bring in the variances, it's not when you put up this stuff, I don't think.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I don't even...
I've never seen it in twenty years.
Is there, would you be willing to do that if we had...
Well, we talked about it before, not related to this letter, just the order that we should do things. And we said the fence would be subject to damage because of the equipment, everything going around.
It doesn't make sense, yes.
It looks like it's a tight lot.
Yeah.
I think that would be a problem for you.
Yeah.
So, let me see if I can find a little... Here was the front fence.
So this was just doing one by six horizontal slats, which is very standard for fence. And the wood would hold up longer than thinner slats that we had shown in that in the last.
And you said that the hydrangeas would be planted, but they would, should be grown up to the height of the fence?
If I'm going to go with a fence the whole length, do we have to...
Well, I guess that's...
I mean, I'd probably put plantings anyway, but I just would rather not be dictating now exactly what the plantings would be.
No, because you mentioned, oh, so you would replace the hydrangeas with the fence? Oh, that's what I understood. Because we were talking about having ice. So this would be the fence extended on the front side.
Excuse me, ma'am, are you here for this application?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have any questions, concerns about this, I'd ask that you come on up and introduce yourself, state your name and your address, and ask whatever questions you want of the advocate. If you want. You don't have to, if you like.
At this point, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Questions, concerns? Yeah? Okay. All right, I'm not, I'm in a quarrel with, you know, re-upping, so to speak, the last application, but I want to keep it my recommendation, and I'll make the resolution is that we keep it the same as it was back in 2021.
Subject to the change in design of the fence.
And subject to the change in the design of the fence. Yeah?
Right.
Okay. Last call?
I'm going once.
All right. All right, so at this time, I'd make the motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the public hearing is closed. I have 62 days with which to...
Take your time.
I try, I actually, I try to do it in the, in the next meeting. All right, or if you like, I can extend it out to the...
Now, if the planning board takes a few months to approve it, then winter comes, and we decide we want to build next spring, we would then lose this approval again, right? So we would have to break ground before, if we write the resolution.
Okay.
Now, we'd have to break ground like before February.
Before March 15th, which would mean the next meeting, when they agree, then we can give you the actual approval.
Now, if we do wait until April, we may go beyond the 62 days. Sometimes we run into that.
Usually a day or two.
But as long as we break ground, we're fine, right? Per meeting requirement.
Right, as long as you break ground. But I guess what I'm saying to you is this, I can have it available at the next meeting, or if you prefer, subject to what's going to happen in the future, if you want it to be available at the April meeting. We could do that. My hesitation is that sometimes we go beyond 62 days because of the way things run. It could be 63 or 64. If you're willing to consent to an extension of time of a day or two, or whatever it is, I can make it available for the April meeting, if that works better for you. You can tell me, I'll do it in March.
I think it might be safer.
Safer in April?
What I would suggest, so because it isn't currently in front of the planning board, the planning board is likely waiting for the ZDA's decision on it. So from my understanding from your deliberations today is that you will be granting the variances...
That's my intention.
That are similar in...
Same reception, yeah.
With the exception of the suspension. So I will relay that to the planning board consultant so they know that it's going to be coming. And that way, hopefully, the planning board can be treated. The only thing, the planning board in the referral did ask that if the fence is to be included, that you will be applying for the wetlands permit. So that will, that will be a condition in the, in the ZDA resolution. And I scratch you with that, you can just apply for it, run simultaneously with your current application. So I'll let the planning board know that they feel comfortable moving forward with their review, and then that should hopefully help you move forward with your comments.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and that's all we have on for this evening. Anything, anything else? If you have any issues, concerns, or...
I just have three minutes.
Yeah, so at the January meeting, the maintenance application was not accepted as complete. We will wait for some renderings.
Right.
So as the public hearing notice was not sent out. So they were originally supposed to be spent, but we were today. The notice didn't go out, and we are still waiting for some renderings, which I believe might have been dropped off.
Just dropped off this evening?
So, so we can have the...
Gretchen has one.
I have electronically, they didn't have the newspaper copies yet.
Well, they did, I'm sure.
So tomorrow, I'll email them.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, assuming that they send the notice, assuming that they send the notices out for the public hearing, they can be expected to be from March.
Yeah, no, they, they came here, and we informed them that it was not on. But they did bring the paper renderings, which are...
Oh, electronically, so sent.
And which were nice, and they showed the structures and how they were going to appear on the property.
Does it, without the date, just, did you look at them?
Yes.
It looks like they, I just wanted to know that it looks like they would...
Satisfy our requirements.
Okay, so yeah, so as long as they make the public hearing notices in time for the March meeting, they should be scheduled for the public hearing.
At first, earlier, I just saw some, I think of plantings and things that came like that.
Yeah, that was their landscape.
That was it, that came first, and I thought, what is that? It doesn't have anything else here.
This shows the structures and how they appear on the property, and it's what we like.
And so just also, we did receive referral responses from the CAGD and the planning board on maintenance, which we can discuss, but just, they're part of the record now. And they, they did raise some concerns, but I, rather than getting into the concerns, I'd rather have the advocates here to...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Did the applicant get a copy of those referrals?
From the CAGD?
To them, but I'll double check tomorrow.
Okay, just so that they're aware of it.
Since they've sent them on the app.
Yeah, and actually, the planning board, the maintenance are going to be on the planning board this Tuesday, so that will be their initial meeting.
Oh, that's interesting, this Tuesday?
This Tuesday, yeah.
Is it okay for members of the ZDA to sit in on those meetings?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
It was an interesting letter, it was really well-written.
Yeah, it was, I thought it was helpful for the board's consideration. But yeah, of course you can sit in.
Great.
Good.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll do that, I'll make that motion.
All right, you do that.
I'll make a motion. I need to back.
No, no, no. I'll second it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.